Recording in progress.
Good evening, I'd like to call the meetings order if we can rise to the pledge please.
United States of America, we are one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty and justice for all.
This past Friday, our community experienced an unthinkable event. We lost Ava, the Ava Wood, ninth grade student from Derby. Junior high school by all accounts, a wonderful young lady who is full of life. So before we begin today's meeting, I ask that we observe a moment of silence in memory of Ava. Thank you. Dr. DeBarbary also has some words that you would like to share this evening?
Thank you. Words certainly cannot express the tremendous grief our school district and community are feeling over the tragic loss of Ava. Talking to her teachers, coaches, friends, we have heard the countless stories of Ava's kindness, sense of humor, friendship, and determination. She was loved and will be missed by so many. Want to take this opportunity to publicly thank our staff at Derby Junior High School and the other staff members working throughout the district for their quick and brave response to this tragedy. Our crisis response team immediately took action to provide support to students and those in need. As a district, we have received an outpouring of support from the community and neighboring school districts. We will forever be grateful for the kindness and support we have received during this extremely difficult time. This school district community has proven numerous times that we are a family and we come together in times of need because together we are Beville Strong. Please continue to keep Ava's friends and family in your thoughts and please continue to be there for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Barbary. Next up, roll call Kim, are you all set?
Yes, I am.
Next item C, resolved if Board of Education approve the agenda for the January 23rd, 2023 regular Board of Education meeting. How about motion please? Jeff first, Shelly second?
Can I propose an amendment to the agenda? As a result of the discussion in the facilities committee meeting, we'd like to add one item to the executive session this evening regarding the proposal to acquisition sale of real property. There's no secret, we're looking at doing some renovations at Ray which would include the possibility of purchasing some property to provide different access points to that property. So that would give board members an opportunity to ask questions about that. We are looking to have something on the agenda next week if we felt it appropriate to put that this evening for board members to be able to ask questions.
Can I have a motion for an alternate to add an S A G N A?
Motion.
Sam first?
Second.
Second Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Pass is nine zero. Next up, we have the Board of Education's spot wait, so Dr. DeBarbary will do the section of the agenda.
Thank you. We are, before we begin, I want to first thank our performing arts staff, Mr. Keating, Mr. Vanderstow, Mr. Carkey for leading our, in preparing our students for their recognition this evening. We're excited tonight to recognize eight students from CW Baker High School for being honored by the New York State School Music Association by being selected to participate in the 2022 All-State Winter Conference. The conference was held in December in Rochester. Two of our students were selected to perform and six of our students were selected as alternates. It's an honor to be a part of NISMIA All-State Winter Conference and we're so proud of our students. So at this time, we're going to actually call the eight students up. This is Gecko, one of our board members is going to distribute a certificate and we will kind of form right in between the board members here in this open U shape and we will get a few photographs for our public information specialist. We'll start first with Finian Sari who was recognized for percussion. Next, we have Keenan Smith for bass. Also on the bass, Benjamin Essick. Recognized for both trumpet and tenor, Gordon Flood. For recognition with viola, Lilian Lavallette. For violin, Lauren Gasden. For the cello, Jayden Miranda. And our final recipient here for the alto, Jillian Parker. Again, congratulations to all those students.
Next up on the agenda, we have the Correspondence Board Activities and Committee Reports. On January 10th, we had a Board of Education building visit at Bamburin Elementary. Any of my board colleagues have anything to share?
Thanks Jen. I was able to attend the visit at Bamburin. It's always a pleasure to go back to the kids' home school. If kids were doing their things in the classroom, we went into a couple of special rooms. The music class was having a lesson and they were trying out the new drums, so that was a lot of fun. Actually, myself got in there and tried to get a little rhythm going, it was fun. Let's see, what else did we see? We went on into a fifth grade classroom where the kids were working on their math, all in different groups. Some good feedback from the kids, they were engaged.
Hi, I was, I can help you. Principal Cornet took us into one of the classrooms and we watched the second steps lesson. Yeah, it was very engaging with the puppet and the kids and it was really nice to see that lesson or part of that lesson because we've heard a lot about that from some of the strategic plan, planning presentations here. So I could have stayed in that classroom the entire visit, it was
It was a lot of fun.
Yes, it was.
Very engaging.
Does anyone have anything else who's on that tour?
I'd just like to thank the staff and all the students at Bamburin, they were very engaging and they couldn't stop talking to us and wanted to show us everything they were doing and I enjoyed the gym, the phys ed teacher was teaching new basketball skills, so that was fun.
Thank you. On January 18th, we did a building tour of Elden Elementary.
I'll start off on that one too. It was a great opportunity as always to see the Yonahba buildings. We were welcomed with lots of different welcome signs that they had put up throughout the building for us as the board members. And we first went in to meet, we coordinated with three student council members and they were fantastic. They all came up to all of us and introduced themselves. That was, that was difficult for those kids that age, but they did a stellar job. So that was a great start to the visit. We also went into, excuse me, Mr. Coughlin also was telling us that they were reading one book, one building, one book. And they were sharing some information about that and the kids were excited. And then we went into another classroom, I believe it was Mrs. Wyder's classroom, where she had had the kids make welcome signs for us and was telling the kids a little bit about what the roles are of the board members and why we were there. So overall, it was great to be in there and appreciate everybody welcoming us.
And then the, one of the classrooms sang to us that, it is so amazing, the meatball song?
Yeah, SpaghettiOs, yeah, spaghetti meatballs.
Maybe you want to speak?
Thanks, Wayne.
And then he had him sing a song, or had him sing a song about the Bills.
About the Bills.
Yeah, that was, that was really good too. But it was a great visit. Does anyone else have anything they want to share, Sam?
The students had began participating in the park program and they were explaining that to us and showing us the book they were reading and their buddy partners, so that was exciting to see that.
That was it then. Then, let's see, January 18th, the same day, there's a joint PTA officers meeting, Joe?
So we had approximately 10 members were at the joint PTA officers meeting. Dave, Kim and myself were there. We were able to secure a district-wide safety team member, which that person is on the agenda of representing the PTA later this evening. Talked a little bit about a school safety update, the dates for the upcoming joint PTA meetings and then we spent a significant amount of time discussing what, where we are right now with the 2023-24 school budget and the capital project that's being proposed for the vote.
Thank you. And then prior to the meeting today, there's a facilities committee meeting. Not sure if there's anything else that the community needs to plan?
First thing we talked about was the $100,000 project for 22-23 school year that's been done at Reynolds. PA system and the site work. We do have SED approval on that and we're just waiting for big dates to come out. For next year, we're looking at doing work at McNamara, the same kind of work, the PA system, possibly some offices for the CRO. And $10,000 of that work has to be done inside the building and it's going to be similar to Reynolds and we're waiting for the SED, I never think it's right, C R O work to be submitted. Thank you.
We reviewed the 2021 capital project, that's the 3.8 million dollar project. It encompasses a lot of, a variety of different work, different maintenance. Split into two phases, the first phase is underway, the second phase, which would be the McNamara bus loop renovations and other miscellaneous work is been approved by SED, waiting on bid dates for that. The most recent project approval for Derby, the 32.8 million. That, the architects are, consultants are continuing to work with the Derby staff on design. So they anticipate a SED submission for that.
Okay, next up, we discuss the capital project vote coming up in May. For all those anxiously awaiting the next hive, it went to print today and the primary topic of the entire hive being the highlights of what will be proposed in May. Some of the exciting things that will be on there is building the new pool in the current small gym area. Using that old pool space to now expand the gym, to make it a lot more amenable to the activities we have in there, elevated track, things like that. There'll be, there's also some pictures in there that will help you visualize what some of these changes will look like, including the, all the updates to the science wing, there's some proposed changes to some of the science spaces. We'll also cover some, some things at Ray Middle School that will be done and then the large combination multi-use fields that will allow softball to come back on campus. And that has been expanded to now be able to do softball and baseball games simultaneously. And when they're not in use for baseball and softball, it can accommodate basically any sport, marching band, anything like that. So hopefully you'll take the time to read it, if you've got questions, let us know. But we are going to start. The administration's going to start reaching out and attending some of the town meetings and some of the organizations to start getting word out to get some questions answered. We proposed during the meeting that when they get that scheduled together, that it'd be nice to at least have a facility committee member at each of those meetings, just in case they have questions for the board on that. Once that schedule's available, send it out to the board so everybody has awareness on that and exciting stuff.
We talked about our long range infrastructure, infrastructure plan and next steps. One RFP was received by Dev Errors and there's going to be more information in our weekly letter. And we're hoping to have, have it on the next meeting for approval. Basically, the purpose of this is to get more community involvement, seeing how things have changed now that we have pre-K. And basically looking at building configurations. We talked about safety and security. The district is working with consultants and looking at what's been done and what needs to be done. And parts of that plan is confidential for student safety. But one of the topics they talked about was weapon detection at doorways, but they decided to first concentrate on film on the exterior. And then our last topic was building walkthroughs. That's going to take place on March 10th for the elementary buildings at noon and then March 13th at noon for Ray, Baker and Derby. And then we also discussed possibly changing our May facilities meeting and there's more to come on that.
Thank you. And on the rest of that section, all of our upcoming meetings from January 30th all the way through March 1st. So I'm not going to read through those, but everyone can look to make sure they have those on their calendar. And next up is the student board report, so Azan will take over for this section.
There we go. So, good evening. Goes without saying that the last few days have been difficult for the entirety of the community, students and anyone really, the entirety of the community as I said. From a student perspective, I just kind of wanted to echo what we asked you to Barbary and Mrs. Petrino said. First, I wanted to say that from a student perspective, it's been amazing to see the effort that's been put in for the entirety of the board staff throughout the district, whether it be guidance, counselors, administrators, or even teachers. Sitting in my seventh period class around 12 o'clock on Friday, we all became unfortunately aware of the tragedy that occurred. And by eighth period, there was some plans in place to take care of students that weren't seeing a response that quick and that powerful was definitely moving. And moving into the weekend, of course, being the additional support that was provided to students again, just from my perspective was incredibly powerful and it was just nice to see. There's very few positives that come out of something like this and that, as all of us have felt, you know, it's, it's just difficult, but there's a community that's able to come together as strong as Baltimore has been able to time and time again. Speaks volumes to the community that we are, whether it be the school district, you know, even looking outside of the school district, just the vigil that you placed the other day, the incredible show up that there was and whether it be students or adults or teachers, everyone coming together as a community and finding some positivity and something as dark as been occurred. Outside of that, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's, it's difficult for students, but eventually we'll all make it through this. Sitting in Baker has been difficult, going from walking down the hallway and the students, you know, crying in the hallway and expressing their emotional emotions to today, plenty of us trying to just make it through the day and trying to approach it in the most positive way that we can. This week, I often talk about the positivity project and this week I thought it was, you know, important to note that the character trait of the week was social intelligence and I think that as well speaks well, just being aware of, you know, the things that go on around us and the way that we can pick one another up. There's been a lot of students that have come together too, which is, you know, encouraging. Students that are just making sure that their friends are doing well, whether it be kids in the elementary schools or the middle school, junior high school and the high school. So just across the board, everybody coming together to try to make the most out of such a negative situation and this stuff is difficult to talk about, but it's just nice to know that whether it be the school district or the community, that there's as much support as there is. The coming days and weeks and potentially months will be difficult. But what's important, I think also at the end of the day, is something that I've tried to live throughout the entirety of my walk 17 years. That loving one another when we can is important and although we all share our differences, those differences aren't necessarily that big of a negative thing. Those differences are will make us all individuals and bring us all together at the end of the day. So what I ask all of you individually is walking out of this meeting today, love the people that you love while you can because you never know when that's going to come to an end. So.
Thank you, Azan. That was very well said and I applaud you for speaking so well on a very difficult. Next up on the agenda is public participation. Kim, how many do you have tonight?
We have 12 individuals who have asked to speak this evening.
So what we'll do is we'll randomly pull them over the next 30 minutes. We may get through them all we have before. And those who we don't get to can submit whatever they're going to say to you and if they don't, they can send us an email and get it to you or to us directly. Public comments are welcome. They are limited to three minutes per speaker for total of up to 30 minutes for all speakers combined. They should not include specific individuals or positions. Unless appropriate, the Board of Education will respond by letter to the individual's comment question. Board members will not engage in conversation or comment during this period. Specific employee or student concern should be communicated to superintendent schools during regular business hours. If there are more than five individuals speaking on the same issue, please limit the topic to just five speakers of your choice as a group. We are, we are all here for our students and as expected, everyone speaking tonight will follow these rules and everyone present will model the behaviors that are expected of the students in this school district.
Kim? I need to clarify, I had a couple stuck together when you asked me, so we actually have 14 speakers. I'll call the first speaker. Our first speaker tonight is Chief Michael Lowenchuk in regards to the events of January 20th, 2023.
Good evening. I am here to speak regarding the events on Friday and the level of cooperation between law enforcement and the school district during this tragic incident. Shortly after my arrival at the scene, I contacted the leader of this district from, from that location. I did that for a couple reasons. One, so the crisis team planning could begin. Knowing the impact that this was going to have on the student body and the public in general and as well as the community. Secondly, the reason why I did it also was because the level of trust and cooperation that's been established between the current leader and leadership in this district and myself and the police department and in the community. Without that level of trust and cooperation that's been established over a great period of time, I would not have made that phone call. Because you have to understand from our perspective, we have to ensure that family members and those people that need to be notified of such a situation learn about it firsthand and not through the media for some other bad means. So that level of trust and cooperation is paramount to me and I wouldn't have made that call to that individual unless I knew that I could trust him. Secondly, thirdly, actually, once the sheriff told me Shelley arrived at the scene, he and I responded to the district office, met with the leader of this district and we advised him of our intention to hold a press conference at 2:00 in the afternoon. Obviously, we didn't do that. We moved it up to noon and we did that specifically because of the discussions and the request from the leader of this district. Because the impact that that would have, right as dismissal would take place and the upheaval that that would cause to the students. And his desire to ensure that the crisis team and counselors of this district had an opportunity to provide as much guidance and support as possible. I just want to comment that there's no manual for this. I've been a policeman for 35 years, I've been the chief of police for 15. There's no manual to turn to and say, go to page 432 and it'll tell you what to do. Decisions were made that were in the best interests of the students, the public, and I can't say enough about the exemplary leadership exhibited on that day by the person that's the current leader of this school district. If you have any questions, if this board has any, I know that the policy is not to ask questions or comment. I think this is a unique situation, so if the board has any, I'd be happy to respond. Otherwise, thank you for your attention.
The next speaker is Curtis Billings in regards to superintendent.
A little nervous here, this is the first time I've ever done this. Azan, that was very well said, what you said. I know your dad would be very proud of you too. Good evening, my name's Curtis Billings. I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of my family. I currently have two children who attend Bamburin Elementary School. I'd like to thank the staff and Mrs. Cronin for giving my children a great education experience so far in their early years of their education. My wife and I are currently educators in another district, but absolutely love Bonzo schools. My wife is an alumni of this district, my mother worked in this district for 28 years and retired in 2005. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. DeBarbary. For his years in service he's given to this district. When we had to deal with some difficult situations with some of our previous administrators, Dr. Barbary is always the person who stepped in as our acting superintendent. Throughout that, he's also had to fill in for another administrator in the most recent times now. I just want to give you a little refresher. Since Mrs. Dangle's retirement in 2014, this district has been a joke for the superintendent's position. We've had Mr. Hamilton, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Thompson. All three of these superintendents cost this district and taxpayers a lot of money.
I just already reminded you that we can't use names.
Oh, I'm sorry. So let me just, let me just break this down. Basically, since Mrs. Dangle, we spent $170,000 on a superintendent who was not working. We spent another $71,387 five hundred and seventy-three dollars and still counting. We've also have had lawyer fees. We've hired a hearing officer, which I don't know how much that would cost. Don't forget about the company we hired for the superintendent search. Um, and now we're looking at hiring another acting superintendent. This is going to cost us eighty-three thousand, eighty-three thousand from June, from February to June and an eight hundred dollar for housing subsidy. Hopefully, the board makes a wise decision and realizes that Dr. DeBarbary should continue being the acting superintendent. Before I--
Please refrain from using names.
Sorry, it's very difficult. Um, so the president of Beaville's Administration Association has urged the board to keep Dr. DeBarbary and I know I'm not supposed to--
I'm going to have to cut you off until you--
Okay.
--again, I, I expect you to--
So, what I'd like to, I'd like to end this as, I want to thank personally Dr. DeBarbary for everything you've done tonight.
We are all here for students and discussing that everyone speaking tonight will follow these rules and everyone present will model the behaviors that are expected of the students in this school district. We are the adults in the room and we expect our students, for those who are in education, that the students follow these rules. If we're not following here at the highest level, how can we possibly expect that to happen on a day-to-day basis? So we're going to continue, but if this happens again, we're just going to stop public comment. This is a board meeting, it's not a meeting of the public. We open this time to hear from the community.
Kim, who's the next one? James Hulay in regards to finances.
Thank you and good evening. For those that don't know me, I'm a lifetime resident of Baldonzo and I've been a student, a parent, a coach, a teacher and a board member in this district. So I've got a pretty good idea of what goes on around here. And unfortunately, this board has made a laughing stock of our once admired school district. Current and former members of the community have asked me what's going on up there and I have to plead ignorance because so much of the decisions and tactics of the board are discussed in secret executive sessions, presumably with the school attorney. As reported on television, the district has already paid fifty-five thousand or more to our on-leash leader. As reported on Channel Nine Sunday night, he will resign at the end of June. We will also be paying him his two hundred thousand dollar salary to do nothing until then. And what about the legal fees? That has to be an impressive sum. To top it all off, the board now plans to contract with the temporary leader until the end of June to the tune of eight hundred dollars per weekday, which will cost well over seventy-two thousand. I've heard numbers in the eighty thousand dollar range. And will another search be conducted at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars? With all of these costs added up, by the end of June, the board will probably have wasted a quarter of a million dollars on this situation. Previous searches haven't been very successful and now given the record of this board, I doubt another expensive search would be of value because no highly qualified candidate in his or her right mind would want to come here. Most people familiar with the district know that the right person for the job of this illustrious potentate, because I'm not supposed to name the title, you know, so the illustrious potentate of the district, um, is right here in this room. He has served as a math teacher, a coach, a wrestling official, a high school principal and in multiple positions in district administration and is currently once again leading the district. He is highly intelligent, well-qualified and a sure leader. He has successfully directed the district through several failed administrations, some very difficult situations and the COVID crisis and will never embarrass our community or the district. Also, he, along with the entire staff, would work diligently to catch students up on their studies who have fallen behind due to COVID and will work tirelessly to raise math, reading and other academic test scores. Not the teachers and staff in the trenches, but you, the board, have really fumbled the ball. Please do the right thing and hire the man who has earned and deserves the top spot in our district and save the taxpayers what money you still can before it's too late. And then I think a number of you should consider resigning. Thank you.
The next speaker is Beryl Wells in regards to superintendent.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Beryl Wells and like a few of the speakers that have already spoken, I too am a native of Baldonzo, born and bred, proud graduate of the class of nineteen eighty-three. I also worked for the Special Education Summer School when I was in college and one year at McNamara School as a teacher assistant. I'm a teacher in another district and I'm here tonight, um, I know I only have a couple of minutes, but first I want to go back and I, I do want to criticize this school board. I had been involved in several superintendent searches in the past and I noticed in this last superintendent search, you were going to do a nationwide search and, um, you only involve the public by using a survey and then when you, I don't even know if you had some finalists, but in the past, we've always had two or three candidates that would come to the district for an entire day that would meet with all of the stakeholder groups, including the unions, the residents, the business people. That did not happen and suddenly we had the superintendent that we have. Three failed superintendencies in a row is not a good record. Um, I just want to reiterate what everybody else said. We have somebody in this room, I will not mention his name, but I think he's sitting up there, um, under the B and I've known this person since I, I was on the board nineteen years and we hired this person as a vice principal and he has risen up the ranks. He is an extremely knowledgeable, intelligent, compassionate, oh, compassionate, I don't know why that keeps going off, uh, person. And I think our district would be well-served, um, to have him as our superintendent, not just an acting superintendent. So as others have said, I would urge you, please do not go out and hire an acting superintendent. We do not need one. We have a person that's a proven leader right here in this room and I, again, uh, I don't know what else to say. I think some people have said it much more eloquently, eloquently than I have, but I think you need to look yourselves in the mirror and decide, why are you here? Why are you sitting up there? Right? We always say it's about the students, but it doesn't seem that way when we have somebody that is a proven leader, that cares about this district, that has student, that has children in this district, has invested in this district and yet you pass him over every single time. You, when, when we have problems, you turn to him, he's right there, he does the job and then you tell him, I, I don't know what you're trying to tell him, but, uh, it, it doesn't sit well with the public because he's doing a great job and it's like you're slapping him in the face and I don't think that's very well appreciated by, uh, most of the people that have a connection with this district. And that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
The next speaker is Kim Caff in regards to kudos to Boe.
Hi. This is, am I good? Okay. I, I know many people that sit in this chair, including myself, because we've all meant before, or most of you, that it, um, it's always with a complaint or that's when you show up and something's wrong. So I'm doing the opposite tonight. Uh, I just want to raise my hat to all of you. I think that what you have done since the fall is a titleless, thankless job. So I'm excited for what's ahead. I'm excited to see what an interim person can do. I'm sure I'm the minority in the room, but that's all I'm here to say is thank you for what you've done. And my other comment is I hope we have all these people when we start talking about the budget in attendance. Thanks.
The next speaker is Dick Johnson in regards to current events.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you to each of you for your service. I'm here tonight to echo some of the other speakers and say, I hope that this board is wise enough not to turn one unfortunate incident into more unfortunate incidents. Think that you know that this going on at the school is a very active discussion in our community and I think what happened, the tragedy we faced and the leadership involved certainly enforces the belief and the facts that you have wonderful leadership in place and why you would entertain changing that leadership is beyond me. Secondarily, you have financial responsibilities and to spend more money on this situation does not seem to make any sense. I've seen no logic put out by the board as to why changes need to be made and from my information in the community, people are very happy with what's progressed since the October incident. Lastly, I would urge you not to turn this into an opening line of a Shakespeare play as one of my people in the audience reminded me, please don't turn this into the letter of our discontent.
The next speaker is Kimberly Dickinson in regards to communication and transparency.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Dickinson and I've been teaching in this district for seven years. I understand that many decisions regarding the future of our district are discussed and voted upon by the Board of Education and I have felt confident in many of those decisions until recently. I'm not one to speak up publicly, sorry, but it's imperative that the Board of Education understands that I am only one of many, many staff members who serve our children every day that is questioning the recent decisions, our district leaders, our district leadership that you have made. Sixteen months ago, I received an email I was not expecting. The Board of Education voted seven to one on new leadership from outside the area to lead our district, eighteen days before the new school year started. It boggled my mind then and it still does today. Sixteen months ago, our acting leadership at the time, who like many said before me, has stepped up and served on countless occasions as acting superintendent in our district's times of dire need--
Who else?
--who also is invested in our tight-knit community, seemed to be overlooked by the board. So today it's important that the board here hears this. Someone mentioned earlier that you often don't hear us until there are complaints and I agree with that and so I think it's important that you realize that many of us who haven't been speaking up are very happy with what our acting leader has been doing for us and I guess we've been taking it for granted recently. I feel supported every day when I come to work. I feel supported by my coworkers, my union, my building administration, the parents of the students I teach and most importantly, my district administration. I urge the board members to visit our schools and not merely walk around to observe the amazing teaching and leadership that takes place because I'm confident you'll see that regardless of what building you come to or classroom you visit. And the credit for that is a team effort made possible by district leadership. Please come sit down with us, teachers, and ask us what matters. Ask us who we feel will guide our district in the right direction because they have supported us and guided us in the right direction for quite a while now. Ask us who we feel supported us in the past after the last three leaders have resigned before their contract has ended. Please ask us who we feel will serve what's in the best interest of our community's children because that's who we're here for. Because the answer you overwhelmingly receive will certainly lead you to focus on one person. This is an important matter that I hope you don't take lightly this evening. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, when you're speaking, if you keep the mic away from you, it will pick up your voice if you get too close, it causes it to shut off. Sorry, I didn't say that previously. Our next speaker is Sally Dagger in regards to hiring.
Can you hear me? I thank you for this opportunity. Okay, can you hear now? I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am also a former board member. I taught in the district for many years. I was an administrator in the district, so I do, I very strongly understand what goes on in this school district. I have no problem whatsoever with the present leadership of the daily operation of the school district right now. There is absolutely no need to hire an outside administrator to come and sit in the district office and pay an exorbitant amount of money. I also am saying, some of you board members better think twice because some of you really need to turn in your resignation and say goodbye to the district.
The next speaker is Timothy Dwyer in regards to acting superintendent position.
I'll apologize in advance because, um, I'm not going to say anything much different than anyone else has said tonight, um, but my name is Tim Dwyer. I'm the parent of a twenty sixteen and a twenty eighteen graduate of Baldonzo High School and I'm the parent of a current high school junior. I want to commend you, I can't remember your name, but what a great representation of our school district. Awesome job. I want to speak tonight in support of our current leader, um, and ask that you give him consideration for the permanent position. I don't know if he wants this job, but if he does, it should certainly be his. He has led us through COVID, he's led us through multiple suicides and now he's leading us through a murder-suicide. He has done that with compassion, empathy and with a focus on what is best for our students. During this most recent incident, our community has been recognized for coming together and caring for one another. Four superintendents ago, since that time, we've experienced a number of gaps in the hiring of a superintendent. Each of these gaps have made our school district a laughingstock, not just locally, but statewide and in some cases, most recently, nationally. The current leader, each time, has come to become a stabilizing force for our students, our parents and our community. To replace him now at such a critical juncture is not only insensitive to the needs of our students, our parents and our community, but it's just plain, obviously irresponsible. I want to urge you to continue with him as our acting superintendent and give him the due consideration to become the permanent superintendent of our school district. Thank you.
The next speaker is Enid Cardenell in regards to superintendent. Enid Cardenell, and I'm sorry if I said that incorrectly.
No, you said it just right. Thank you. Okay, I've been introduced. I've lived in this district for forty-two years. I have five children that have gone through this district, have all graduated from Baker. I've never seen anything like that's been going on recently. I talked to a lot of people and they're saying, what's going on? They're laughing at us. It's embarrassing, really. And you are responsible for hiring this, I referred to it as Fozzo, really. And I don't need to quote--
And I don't need to quote any more figures, they've already been quoted by Lance. I live on a fixed income, a lot of us do. We can't afford to have any more hiring or any more raising in taxes, and we have a wonderful representative now, a fellow who is guiding us. In the past, he's never been in this district. We have had no, no issues at all. And why we have to deal with this now? And it's really kind of, it's sad. It's, you people represent us. We have elected you, granted, we might change our minds on next election, but just remember, you represent us and you need to consider our feelings as well as what you think you'd like to see. So please keep that all in mind, and I thank you, our current leader, for the job that he's doing.
Marty Nell in regards to two agenda items. Marty Nell.
Good evening, everybody. I do first want to commend everybody that volunteers to step up to this position. It is difficult, but with that being said, with some of the things that have been going on, we do have to question some of the actions of this board. So as I've already addressed, an email I've sent to the board and they've posted on social media, which obviously is striking the core because it's had over a hundred shares, I am frustrated and upset with the direction that the board has taken on these agenda 标题. The first one is regarding a settlement agreement with our currently suspended superintendent. I'm the first one, I want to see him out of this district, but I don't feel he is being held accountable for the acts that brought embarrassment and disgrace to our district and community. While during my time at the high school, I would speak to students on numerous occasions about accountability. I'd explain to them that when they did something wrong, they should take ownership, deal with the consequences, learn from the mistake, and move on. What I've learned from the board's action on the superintendent's discipline, it takes about a month before we even, excuse me, even file charges, and then, to my surprise, there was actually somebody that felt he didn't deserve disciplinary charges. And so here we are, back to square one. The settlement has him walking away with no disciplinary charges and walking away with our taxpaying money in his pocket. I wish I could say what that amount would be, but that still has been released by the board to determine what the settlement is. Plain and simple, he is now being held accountable for his actions that night, and the board is handing him a lot of cash, patting him on the back and saying good luck. Is this the message we want to send to our students? That you commit acts such as these and either slate, wipe clean, and profit off of it as well? The criminal court made him more accountable than this district is. That brings me to the other ten item, which is another waste of taxpayer money. I have nothing against, I guess I can't say her name, but the interim superintendent, probably very highly qualified and probably good for any position of superintendent. The board's rationale for appointing a new interim superintendent is to support the district administration, but correct me if I'm wrong, I believe those very people spoke at a December board meeting of their support of our current leadership. Apparently, the board feels they have more knowledge of what they need them to do, even though they collectively have many years' experience in education. I'd like to know which board member spoke to these staff members and asked them what they needed. I fail to understand why we need to pay someone from the outside on a temporary basis to do the job that is already being done by our current acting superintendent. I've had the privilege of working with our current leadership, and he is intelligent, dedicated, and hardworking. In critical situations, which I've had several with him, he is calm, collected, and quick thinking. This was never more evident than over the past few days. I've talked to numerous staff and teachers, especially after my post on social media, and they relate to me that this is not the time for a change in leadership. They need someone they know and trust.
Excuse me, we're three minutes, so you can submit the rest of that to Kim, so we can have other speakers. There's a number of people who turned out.
Excuse me, but this is an important enough thing that let him finish, please. We are all here because of these issues, and we would like to hear it.
I'm here to enforce the rules of our policy that defines education.
And this is a special situation with very, very big issues that need to be dealt with. And a couple of extra minutes tonight to hear our feelings, I don't think is asking the board for very much. So five more minutes, two more minutes, one more minute, I think you can give him that.
We have a number of speakers, and we have thirty minutes, and we'd like to hear from as many as possible. We will get the message because he can turn in the report and we will finish reading it. We read everything that we get.
We question that right now, honestly.
We want to hear the message.
We would like, does anybody else want to hear this?
Yeah!
Tim, who's the next speaker?
The next speaker is Ashley Weaver, Community Perception. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Ashley, Baker High School alum from class of 2017. Post-college graduation in 2020, I began my professional career in Manhattan, where I'm sure you can imagine the question of where are you from is one that I was asked quite often. Though Syracuse would be the more well-known answer, I always reply with Baldensville, as I'm proud to represent the people name, the town my grandparents, parents, siblings, and extended family attended school. This community is one I was actively involved in and the place I've always said I would return to someday raise my children, my safe place to land, no matter how crazy the outside world becomes. The board has since taken this feeling of pride away from me as they continue to show their disregard for what is best for this community. The lack of respect for current leadership, as well as the lack of respect for the challenges and events that have been handled with grace, integrity, and professionalism, makes it very difficult to believe that the board keeps our best interest in mind when making decisions. Do these events, pandemic included, hold no weight in your eyes? And if the answer is no, what are you looking for? The resources and time that have been allocated to fix something that is not broken is concerning as this search for new leadership is the direct effect of core choices made by the board. Now more than ever, Baldensville needs someone who already knows how to do the job, does the job well, and has a vested interest in this community that we call home. This urges me to ask you the question, how can you claim that someone outside, someone that would be outside of this community would be more successful in leadership than someone with a loyalty track record of twenty-plus years to this district? I'm here tonight addressing the board to remind you that the people that sit behind me, along with hundreds of others at home, are the taxpayers funding your decisions, and they absolutely have the right to have their voices heard. As a member of the board, you have volunteered yourself to represent the people and make choices in their best interest. I urge you to set aside your personal feelings, whatever they may be, and think about what is truly best for this district and community, because there's no one better to lead this district than the person you've been relying on to step in time after time to clean up your mess.
Hey, Kim, next speaker.
Next speaker is Tony Cardenell in regards to appointment of acting superintendent and BOE leadership.
I sit here tonight as an employee of the district for thirty years as both a teacher and administrator and administrator associate officer. I sit here tonight as someone who truly does respect the role of the Board of Education and the volunteer service to get to the community. Unfortunately, I also sit here tonight very sad that I have to speak to some hard truths to this board of ed leadership in a public setting because there seems no other way to engage with you. The president of our association requested to meet with members of the board of ed, to which no response was given. We knew that members of this board had met with members of another association, but have not extended that courtesy to all associations. Get forced to speak publicly at a board meeting. The only response from this board of leadership at a subsequent board meeting was to chastise him for not following arbitrary rules. The item on the agenda tonight for the appointment of another acting superintendent baffles all reasoning. To add this expense to taxpayers without any public discussion or sound reasoning is concerning. You've already appointed an acting superintendent that's extremely competent, proven, and dedicated. How much is this costing you? Five hundred dollars a week. What do you want to pay? Eight hundred dollars a day or four thousand dollars a week, and eight hundred dollars a month housing. Not anything wrong with the person being appointed, but the person is not from here, does not know our needs. Our district's current situation and cost to taxpayers is not due to our district leadership, it is due to the decisions by this board of ed leadership, who is a non-collaborative, closed hiring process that secured the current on-leash superintendent and on this board of ed's leadership decision to extend his three-year contract before the end of year one, unheard of in B-ville. Bringing on a new acting superintendent for five months at eighty-three thousand dollars is wasting taxpayer money. It's causing havoc with district administrators, we have to go through an onboarding process of a new person, causes instability, and distracts us from the work to be done. I urge members of the board of ed to rethink their decision tonight and vote no to this appointment, or I ask to table this motion for public discussion, not an executive session discussion, a public discussion, so we better understand your reasoning and get our leadership team the opportunity to work collaboratively with you to address any concerns you seemingly have. We do want to partner with you, I cannot stress that enough. Up until now, with this current board of ed leadership, our district administrative team has always partnered with the board of ed. We want to work with you and we keep asking to work with you, but have no response from you. Regardless of the outcome tonight, the community needs to know that the current district leaders will continue to be focused on the best interests of our students, but it continues to be frustrating and disheartening after thirty years to work with the current board of ed leadership that chooses not to be collaborative or communicative with the leadership of our district.
It's Brett Maring in regards to hiring.
I'm sorry if you can hear the name.
Brett Maring in response to hiring.
Hello, my name is Brett Maring. I am a 2005 graduate of Baldensville High School, now a current taxpayer, and have children in the district. You said this is a board meeting and not a public forum, so I appreciate you allowing me to speak in your exclusive club. Unfortunately, I and everyone in our community and surrounding communities feel the way that you've been doing your job has embarrassed our school district and our community. Obviously, there's been an exponential waste of taxpayer money on failed superintendent after failed superintendent, but the bigger question is who is responsible for this long history of failures? And the common denominator is the board. It would appear that I went through stricter background checks to coach my son's Little League than you performed on our current vacationing superintendent. I hate to play a song that's been played many times tonight, but I'm a sucker for a good hit. The fact that our current acting super has been good enough to step up for the role twice now in the wake of district embarrassments, but somehow not good enough to take over the role full-time makes you all look really, really bad. Then you continue the community embarrassments with the news of hiring a new temporary superintendent at eight hundred dollars a day, changes the mood from embarrassment to anger. Our acting super has devoted years to this school district and bleeds B-ville. Money aside, there's no person more qualified to be doing this job than our current acting superintendent. If this position goes to any other person than Dr. DeBarbury, each and every one of you on this board should step down because Baldensville doesn't want you.
Moving on to the agenda, item seven, consent agenda. Result of the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to its attach. Can I have a motion, please? Denise first, Jeff second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine zero. Next up on the agenda is reports. So Dr. DeBarbury will start with the budget reports, item A.
So we have Chris Campbly, Director of Athletics, Physical Education, and Health, who will be coming up to the microphone. This is the second reading of our athletics budget. There were no changes since he last presented. Are there any questions from the board for Chris?
Chris. Could you just, I just know a little bit about the intermural program?
Yes. With the intermural pro, sorry. We work in conjunction with the special ed department in terms of giving opportunities for students with special needs to go out in the community, whether it's bottle drive, you know, they definitely, done some other, I know they were doing things that, you know, like bowling, you know, things of that nature to get kids out in real-life settings. So we fund that part, you know, obviously, we work like Ezarowski, you know, who organizes this monies for our workers, and again, it's just giving opportunities for students with special needs.
Does that include the unified?
That does not, unified is out of my coaching fund that we use, but we do have, you know, our special ed teachers put, you know, make recommendations in terms of who they would like to participate. We do like to have the students who are possibly getting close to graduation participate first for basketball and bowling, but that is on a separate money line. Yes.
Any other questions for Chris? All right, thank you, Chris. Yes, thank you. Next, on the leadership report, we're going to start, we just have one item. We have Carrie Lamachia and Rock O'Malley, who are going to come to the podium here, and they're going to start first. Carrie's going to provide a brief overview of the special education budget, and that's going to lead right into the proposed special education budget for the 2024, 23, 24 score year. Yes, they're going to do the quick overview of the special education update before we get to the budget presentation.
Good evening. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the update and then I'm going to talk about the budget. You know, as you know, all of our, everything we do in special education is like all the strategic building plans you hear, and everything we do just aligns with a strategic plan with a goal of developing action steps and ensuring programs and initiatives aligned with these goals. And then also in special education, we have a lot of regulations, state guidance to follow, so there's a lot of that. Before we get into some of the updates, I just wanted any updates and exciting things that we're doing, we're very proud of. We felt it was important to provide some background information for you. You know, just a quick little update, we currently have seven hundred and seventy-six school age students who are identified. This corresponds to a rate of thirteen percent for classification, and just for a little background information, the national average is fifteen percent. Eighty-five percent of our students that are identified are supported within the co-teaching model and inclusive programming. Although we offer the continuum to all students that are identified, we do have a good rate, eighty-five percent of students that are supported within inclusive settings. And again, just for a little background information, the national average is sixty-six percent. So we're doing pretty good in that area, and we're very proud of that. We have a hundred and seventy-one students who are preschool age, who are identified as preschool age students with disabilities that receive special education services. And again, just for awareness purposes, this number has increased by forty-six students from our October snapshot. So on to some of the exciting things that we're doing. STAR CDM is something that you, STAR assessment is something you've heard a lot about in your strategic plans. We talk a lot about it, you've heard it in data reports, it's on the dashboard. We use STAR as an assessment, a benchmark assessment for students. And it's often confusing because it's a great assessment for students who are on level or slightly below level. It's a good way to get a quick view of students that are, you know, at risk or on level or on watch, but for us in special education, we have students that are struggling or have learning disabilities, or we have students that are being referred to our pre-referral teams that might be identified. It's not a great assessment, and I kind of circle back to when we presented summer school, and there was a question about data. And there's really not a great assessment that we can use over time that's sensitive to progress. So we, Rocko, in collaboration with Danielle, brought- So we, Rocco, in collaboration with Danielle, brought STAR CDM data forward or assessment forward. We trained all of our psychologists and specialists, special education teachers in how to use this measure to be able to better collect data over time for students that are a greater to below level. Because STAR is a good assessment for students who are on watch, but if you're looking for progress for students that are really struggling, it's not a great measure. So we are working on that and listening to some of the questions that you have in the fall. The minus too, you've heard a lot about that as well. So now that we've kind of gotten triage under the way at the secondary level, we, and thanks to General Wolfkin, we brought some information to our special education teachers at the secondary level just this past month. And working with them to be able to use that measure as progress monitoring tool for students in the area of social, emotional, behavioral goals that might be on their IP. So we're going to start utilizing that as a way to make things a little bit more efficient for them when there is a behavior goal as far as progress monitoring. Self-directed IEPs, we've talked a lot about. This is an initiative that we started over five years ago where students participate and are fully involved in their IP meetings. They present their strengths, preferences, interests, needs, plans for the future and goals. We've expanded this over the years and have found it a very effective in promoting family engagement, student self-awareness and self-advocacy. And it also really promotes collaboration between home and school. We continue to promote this among all of our special education teachers. We would note that the pandemic did slow our progress with this a bit, but our expectation this year to our teachers to spend, to involve students in some way from kindergarten through twelfth grade, whether it is a video, just coming to the meeting and saying hello in the very younger ages. But to begin to work with students so that they are able to understand their needs and be part of that process up until their senior year where they might even run their entire meeting. It's a great thing. New teacher trainings, we've worked with the learning coaches this year to develop specific trainings to support our new special education teachers. We have approximately ten this year. And some of those workshops include writing IEP goals, road to reading, annual review of the self-directed IEPs, supporting students with disabilities at each grade level using models of co-teaching and consulting teacher. Natural proportions, we wanted to kind of mention there was, again, just speaking, you know, we listen to your comments and we always kind of go back. Someone had mentioned, I can't remember who, that a visit at McNamara, they saw one of the new models they're using where they're really working to integrate their students with disabilities across each grade level. And we wanted to let you know that we are, we are working with Mr. Cardmore and all of the building principals to, really, that just involves scheduling, being planful and collaborative. And so we meet with those principals in spring. We look at case loads and we're really just trying to kind of look at those, especially grade levels where we have higher numbers of needs, how we can best support students across each classroom at each grade level so that they're fully integrated. And then Special Champions, which has been a great event for our students. We continue to work each year to just expand that and improve it. This year, we've been meeting monthly with our committee. We have some great things in store. It's going to be an exciting event for our families, community and students. And we just want to remind you to mark your calendars now if you haven't already for May fifteenth and our ring date will be May eighteenth.
Carrie, I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff that is involved in the Special Champions event. It's so wonderful. So thank you to everyone who's involved in that. I know last year we, you talked a little bit about the co-talk in inclusive settings. And it was only in particular subject areas. Have you guys expanded that at all to the other subject areas?
So yes, we did talk about that last year and we were looking to expand it into the sciences in the secondary levels. We did do that in, at Gray this year and did some at Derby too. So what we ended up doing was first focusing on our students that have the most significant learning challenges. So kids that are placed into fifteen to one, like English classes, math classes, but we're being a regular size class. We were able to kind of target that first and having those same students being, having the opportunity to be in an integrated co-talk science class. Our intention was for that to happen this year at the high school also, but that didn't happen and that's due to, instead what we did at the high school was added integrated co-teaching math, which we had never offered at the high school before. So we'd always offer co-talk algebra in ninth grade as well as eighth grade, seventh grade, math all along. But the idea was that the students would, after ninth grade, not necessarily have to go into another, they had many more opportunities to get their math classes at that, at high school level. But this past year, students in ninth grade going to tenth grade, we looked at the students' needs and there was just a very high number of students with specific learning disabilities in the area of math. And based on that, we decided it was really necessary instead to create two sections of integrated co-teaching. Intermediate algebra is that course at the high school. And so it's the first time we were able to offer that instead this year. And it's been very successful actually. We're looking at the information on that. And in fact, we want to look at that continuing next year also as well as continuing to grow our sciences.
Any quick question? I've heard at the preschool level, there's a shortage of providers for the number of services needed. Does that translate once it hits the district? Are we able to cover a hundred percent of our services at that point?
I actually do plan on talking about that during the budget portion.
Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait.
Carrie, the Special Champions event, since we have such a large audience tonight, could you just explain that a little bit for people that don't know what that is?
Sure. So previous to the last two years, the Special Olympics was an event that was held in different districts, schools historically over the last decade. It was up to North Syracuse School District. Previous to that was Liverpool. And the event was very big. It's, I could go on and on, but I'm going to shorten this. So the pandemic kind of brought everything to a halt. And we were kind of at a place before that where we would go to the event and the parking was really, it was hard. It was, there were just so many people. Our students with more severe disabilities would really struggle and spend most of the day, you know, in attendance and not being able to even venture out due to like sensory difficulties or it just was sort of chaotic. And parents couldn't even find their students if they came to watch. So following the pandemic, again, one of those silver linings you don't expect to find, we, that year, they weren't going to hold the bigger event. And kind of last minute, you know, to kudos to Rocco who kind of stepped up and said, we can do this. And we did, within I think a two month period, we planned. And granted, that first year it was small and we were still masked and screening and, you know, doing all of those kinds of things, but it was really a smaller event. And everybody really just kind of commended that, their ability to be there, be with their students, engage and have that event closer to home. We were able to include more students and so next year we decided to keep it that way. So we have, last year we expanded a few things. We had some more students go. We're able to use our secondary students to support our kids to come down to mentor. We're able to have some of our students in community more involved. And so that's kind of how we've decided we like it and we want to continue that way.
Carrie Rocco, as a parent of one of the incredible children who utilizes the services that you discuss here, I could tell you that it's not always easy. And I know you all know that better than most. So I truly and sincerely want to thank you for everything that you've, for mine, you know, on all the children in this district. You know, to echo Sam and Carrie, what you were talking about, community, you're here, you're active. If you want to experience a day of pure joy, come out on May fifteenth and come to the Special Champions event. You will see not only that the athletes are participating, but the secondary students that are participating and encouraging them. The staff and administration that is just there to cheer them on. You can even hear coaches' voices up in the box there calling their names, calling them out as they run their races and they do the events. If you, honestly, if you need a day where you just can sit and have nothing but just joy and you want that or need that even, please come out. It is an incredible event and it's going to get bigger because I don't see how it can't. If you have something that is just so powerful like that, you can't contain it. It just is going to spread. So come out and watch and enjoy it and see what incredible everything we have in this district. So I just want to thank you for all of that.
Carrie, I remember, I think it was my first or second year on the board, I actually drove down to North Syracuse CNS to actually watch. And you were kind enough, I think you got me the pass to be out of the field. And I agree, it was very, I was overwhelmed in like a good way, like I was so overwhelmed with all the kids who were there, all the students from other schools were helping support the special needs kids and just the organization, but I could absolutely see how it was overwhelming. I haven't had a chance to get to the one here, but it is on my calendar to head it this year. And I'd really like to see the difference. I definitely think that I can sense it. It's people can find their kids easier. I didn't even know where our kids were when we were there and, you know, really enjoy it and really support our kids and they know it. I think it was a great decision. I'm looking forward to seeing it in spring.
Good, Rocco, so we'll move right into the new budget proposal.
Thank you. So really kind of looking overarching at the total proposed special education portion of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We see here at the total special ed spend or proposed budget for next year, an increase. It's actually almost exactly a five percent increase from the current year's budgets operating off of. But if you look at the different codes here, you see that the increases are primarily out of two areas, salaries mostly, and then also out of the BOSI's section. So I intend to really kind of focus in on those pieces in my presentation. But as always, if there's other areas or things that you want to have me talk about and your specifics, just please ask. I'd be happy to discuss any and all. So from there, we'll go right to the instructional part. Your first eight budget codes are for the teaching assistants, our special education teaching assistants in each of the schools. And then after that is the next eight budget codes are for our special education teachers in each of our eight buildings. And with those sixteen codes, the budget proposal for next year is just based on the numbers of staff this year and projecting them into next year with their contractual rate increases. With the exception of one code, which is the Derby Student with Disabilities Teachers Section. So in that code, we added and we're hoping to add with the approval of the board, one special education teacher at Derby next year. That would be to bring back a twelve-on-one program to Derby. And it would mirror the program, the twelve-on-one program that we had at the high school. We've had that program at Derby for a very long time, but several years ago, that program was disbanded, so to speak, because there wasn't a need. We didn't have students in need of that program. So now, fast forward to now, we're looking at enough students next year that we would be able to start September with that classroom full, with twelve students and that would meet the need for that program at Derby. So there certainly is a real need for that. And we looked at, can we potentially operate that program with the existing special ed teachers at Derby? And based on the needs and everything that we're looking at, we don't see that as possible. So we are asking to increase the special education teacher at that school to, again, bring that program back. After those codes, the sixteen codes, there's a new budget code you'll see in here that says instructional salaries district wide. And obviously you can see there that there was no expenditures last year or don't know nothing in the current budget for it. But we're asking for two positions in that budget code for next year. So I want to just talk a little bit about that. One is, you know, in line with what Jeff's question was. It's for a preschool special education teacher. We'd like to see if we can, again, add to the budget to hire another special education teacher in our district that would cover preschool special education only. As you might all be aware, and as Jeff was mentioning, preschoolers with disabilities are district oversees. They develop and apply P's and services for those students. But the actual services are provided to private agencies that are in our region, our county, that are approved by New York State Education Department to provide those services and are funded through Onondaga County. So Onondaga County funds the services, private agencies provide the therapists. And that's been how we've been doing it and how everyone basically has been doing it for a long time. The difference now is that we have, last year started some UPK classrooms in our district and have grown that this year too. And I think that continues to look like we want to continue to grow that. And what we're seeing is students, preschool students with higher needs entering into our UPK classrooms, needing support, and us trying to provide that service to having different providers and different agencies coming in and out and providing as best we can the services for those students. As Jeff mentioned, there are shortages in the county. We struggle sometimes to find the service providers for that. So along with the difficulties we find with getting those services and them being from different people, different agencies, we believe that we can do a much greater job if we took that over. If we had a special teacher that could go in and maximize times in classrooms, our UPK classrooms, working with the general teachers and the other service providers in those preschool classrooms, we could have much greater outcomes for our most needy preschoolers coming into our UPKs. As I, the other thing, as I mentioned, Onondaga County funds preschool special ed services. And that wouldn't change, it would be the same here. What we would be looking at is developing a, writing a contract with Onondaga County so that we could, if this happens, we could then bill Onondaga County and receive revenue back from those services. So obviously that doesn't show up on this side of the budget here, but in essence, I would see this as a kind of a wash for the district in terms of costs when all said and done, once you receive those funds back. And then the last salary, I should say, the last position that we're asking to increase that's under that salary code is to add an assistant technology specialist in our district. So the background on that is sixteen years ago, we hired, also hired a speech and language pathologist in our district who has a special expertise in training in assistive technology devices. And we hired her as a speech language therapist in our district and the equivalent of a point eight FTE, so four days a week roughly, to provide speech therapy. And then that last point two percent of her, you know, that one day a week of service would be devoted to assistive technology. Doing evaluations and providing consultation and support for the kids that, you know, need some specialized technologies to support their, either their communication needs or reading needs, et cetera. So that was sixteen years ago and it's going to remain the same till this time. So that's been the same however our students have it been. We've had a real change in the needs of our students over this timeframe where we just have so many more students that come up and have the need for communication devices. And so to have just one day a week to provide it, so this really we find is just not enough. What we would love to see is having a full-time person who can not only just be responsible for doing the evaluations, getting the technology in place, programming things, but really be embedded into classrooms and programs, coaching teachers and teaching assistants and the full staff on how to maximize that child's usage of their communication device and forward it throughout the years so that that can just grow and ultimately really be a best support for a kid possible. So we would think that that is something that would really be a huge gain and benefit to our district. So outside of that, all the other instructional salaries, non-instructural salaries, equipment, materials and supplies, contractual codes, all the tuition codes, we're asking them that we really remain flat, no changes from the current budget till next year. So I was going to skip over those and then just quickly talk a little bit about the BOSI's budgets here. I did add a supplement page to the end of the budget. This is just gets you a sort of historical look over many years of our students, the number of students that are in these BOSI's programs, receiving services from these BOSI's codes over time and what were the associated costs for those students over that timeframe. So you can kind of see things looking over time fairly flat looking, but within each year, you're going to have fluctuations. You know, where kids are coming in, we're now coming in, we'll be out of these programs. So how do we budget for BOSI's? How can we predict what we need? How can we predict what we need for next year? It's not really an exact science, but what we have been doing for many years is we just take the students as of today that are in these BOCs programs, receiving these BOCs services, how much are the costs for those services, you know, the projected cost, and then carry that forward to next year. The only exceptions we know, if there's a student that's going to be exiting next year, you know, is going to graduate or maybe age out, we'll subtract those costs. So that's really in essence how we're budgeting for each of those lines. With the exception of one line, which is the, it's called the handicapped as Swiga line, probably should change that name. But it's on that budget line, the associated amount does not match up to what our projected costs are, never does. That's because we like to use that as our code that adds fund balance. So in the event we need, next year, we find that there's more kids that need to go into this one special team classroom than what we budgeted for, we can easily transfer funds to the board action into that other code, which will allow us to provide the student what they need and have the funds to provide that. So that's sort of the budgeting process that we undertake for the BOCs codes. And then the last one is the transferred special aid funds. That is the code that we use to fund our Baldwinville extended school year summer program. And so what, the reason why it seems like a low number is because actually New York State does reimburse us 80% of the cost of the program. So we're only responsible for 20% of the cost. And that is what would be, that's what, the actual budget amount for next year, typically the total cost of the 22 summer program and then just multiply 20% or, you know, 22 and that was the amount. So that funds that portion of that program. So I know I tried to get through that really quick and really focus on the key areas, but I love the answering questions.
Hi, Gaby. I just have a couple of questions on the instructional salaries. There's some larger differences, either increasing or decreasing, that I just need some information on. The Eldon psychologist salary, it's increasing. I want to tell you which one to answer about and then you can go up in there.
Sure, we'll do one of that.
Okay, sure.
So at Eldon, last year, we had one of our veteran psychologists and she transferred up to Baker mid-year last year. So we hired a brand new psychologist for that building, so not a veteran, just a salary difference that way.
The other one was in Van Diern, almost, not quite double, but we made a budget now for next year.
So Van Diern, we had a maternity leave in '21, '22 for the psychologist. And due to circumstances, we were able to cover the support at that school with a school psychologist intern. We pay, we always do a paid school psychologist internship, is able to function and provide the role. They are certified through the state to be able to provide services. But we pay them through the federal grant, through a stipend, it's a small amount. So that's just, it was, that's the reason for that.
So I guess my other questions are, it's basically because somebody was leaving, you hired somebody new or filling in. It's not, you're not taking away.
Correct, yes, that's correct. Anything is the same.
Thank you, Rocco, and thank you, Carrie, for your presentations.
Thank you.
We'll be back next for reading for the review. So we have the review of the administration budget and Kim's gonna, there's no changes. So are there questions related to the administration budget?
There are no questions on that. I will just mention that we did update the fund balance management projection. It really is pretty similar to what it was in December because we are so far out. So as we get closer and closer to the end of the school year, you will see that number change a little bit more.
So the last item we have under the reports was brought up at the last Board of Education roundtable. And it was a policy that we were putting on based on discussion for first reading. And this relates to courtesies provided to the board, current and former members to participate in the graduation ceremonies.
I know it's up for a first reading, so obviously both for a second reading following the policy. But I still have the same thoughts as I shared out publicly last time. I need to spend time on first reading, given that since we both seconded. I shared my thoughts during the roundtable discussion, the last board meeting. So I still stand with what I had to give at last meeting.
So I didn't give an opinion last meeting. I took the information that, you know, other board colleagues had stated, I kind of processed that. And I just wanted to say that it is a nice courtesy. But at this time, my thoughts are, I would hate to see people run for that reason. So I just wanted to kind of say that I wouldn't support that policy.
I don't really look at it as a courtesy. All of us are invited to graduation and are sitting up on stage. And to see possibly our son or daughter or grandchild walk across the stage and walk over and give them their diploma is, I don't know, just something nice to do. I don't look at it as a courtesy.
And I'll just state, since I was the one that proposed this, nothing on this says you must. So this is definitely an optional thing. So, you know, we have sitting board members, we have former board members in the audience that have all been given this privilege and, you know, some have chosen to take part, that some have, so I understand. People have some different thoughts. I mean, you can, as you're publicly not in support of this, so you can make that choice. I don't think this applies to everybody, so no one is forced to do this. I think this is personal, so that's all I have to say today.
Anything else, Matt? Moving on to business, item nine. Item A, excuse me. We saw that the Board of Education approved the separation agreement, withdraw internation charges and acceptance of the superintendent of schools resignation pursuit to be attached. Can I motion please? Jeff first?
Second.
Jeff and Shirley, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Passes nine zero. The Board of Education has accepted Superintendent Jason Thompson's resignation from the Vault of Central School District effective close of business on June 30th, 2023. By agreement, Superintendent Thompson will remain on paid administrative leave pending the effective date of his resignation. Includes an agreed upon severance package. The Board has further agreed to withdraw the disciplinary charges seeking termination initiated against Superintendent Thompson on November 10th, 2022. The Board believes this agreement is in the best interest of the district and the community to resolve this matter and allow the district closure and to move forward. Next up, item D. We saw that the Board of Education approved the resolution to appoint the acting superintendent of schools and approve the employment agreement for students to be attached. Can I motion please? Jeff first? Second, Tanya, any questions or discussion?
I do. I'm sorry for my voice, everyone, so it's a little shaky and just had some issues this morning, so I apologize. When I ran for the board event, I remember on May 5th, 2021, I had the opportunity to sit down with some of the representatives of some of the unions that represent our staff, our teachers, our administrators. And, you know, we had a good conversation, they asked me questions, I gave answers. It's typical, I think, with any board candidate who's running. You know, one point in the conversation, there was a question was how would I react in a situation where my opinion, my vote was not the majority? I don't remember my exact words. What I remember is the sum and substance was that all of my votes will always be what I believe is in the best interest of our staff, our teachers, our administrators and our students, even if my voice is the singular voice. And I have done that and I will continue to do that going forward. And I want everybody here to know and everybody watching out there to know that I've read every single one of your emails that you sent. And since the inception of this, I agree. And that is why my vote will be directed in that manner. So I want everybody to understand that. I understand it's an emotional time and I also want people to understand that, you know, my vote is not necessarily against the individual who's on this resolution for acting superintendent. She's an impressive individual, she is. But I will, as I stated, bringing it back to that May 5th, 2021 meeting, will always continue to vote the way I feel is right, I feel is best for our staff, our teachers, our administrators who care for, and make no mistake, as we learned this weekend, they care for our students, our children, in every sense of that word. I will make the decision to vote what I believe is right for them and ultimately for our students every single time. I'm going to do that tonight.
I'll go next. Thank you, Tom. I know some of, these are not easy to say there, but I appreciate your honesty. I too have struggled with this one. I think I've talked to many of you, I appreciate every single one of you that came on tonight and the multitude of emails we've gotten, I too have read every one of them. I've struggled with this, especially after Friday. I will say, many of you have pointed out to me what I already know. And that is that this board has some challenges. This board is not on the same page how to move forward. And that's been extremely challenging for myself. Because I, as probably all nine of us believe, we all believe we know which direction we should go. Unfortunately, this board does not have a consensus where that should be. So because of that, I believe the only way we are going to get there, and that is find a way for this board to move forward, is to get somebody from outside to help, guide some of you.
No!
I know it's not, it's not my number one choice either, but many of you have stated what you want. I believe we may have more common ground than you believe, but I don't think we're going to get there without the help of somebody.
God, if you're not listening.
Seriously.
You're not listening to me.
We are, yes.
You're not listening to us.
So to my board colleagues, I am here for one reason, to approve her. And that is because I expect her in the next four to six weeks to assess what we have and provide her thoughts to us. And that is, do we move forward with what we have or do we need to go find? I, in my heart, I in my heart believe I know what that answer is, that's why I'm trusting in this process. With that, I will concede my time.
Right, where's a consultant versus having a whole thing? Where's the money coming from? You want to read our market, that's right. You want to pay for it? Fine.
I agree that this board has not functioned well and I think that there are some folks in the audience and listening that feel it's a pretty generous assessment. I understand the value in bringing someone in that has quite a bit of experience in a number of different districts ahead of the home. That he said, my confidence is not shaken in terms of the current administration. It was with the board. I've heard the public. I believe in our current leadership and... Sorry, wasn't set fast in that one beginning. Ms. Cop, I truly admire your ability and willingness and courage to come and speak on a, you know, in a time when it's not the popular voice. I mean, that's, that's very admirable, so I appreciate you being able to do that. But, you know, I have confidence in what we do. I'm not here to advance that, please.
A couple of things. I'm sorry. First and foremost, for our students, you need help and support. Please find somebody in your school or staff that will support you. Because I believe 100% our district is here for you. And I'm sorry. Thank you to all the community members that have emailed and talked to us about all your opinions. I read and reread everything numerous times. I ran for our children and I stand by that statement. And I cannot support bringing in another acting superintendent right now while we have. Are there any other comments? This is a position that I don't think any board ever envisioned themselves having to be in. It's a focus found as a, as a, as a. Until tonight, we never even had a superintendent, a vacant seat. Until tonight, until we took action, there wasn't even a seat or a position to even talk about. We have two, we have two very high level positions in the district's organizational chart that each had their different unique responsibilities and they're important for the education and the operations of the district. One person should not be doing both jobs even for additional compensation. We still have over five months before a new superintendent can even be appointed. Five months. So we have an opportunity to bring someone in to provide additional support and resources to administrative school so everyone can get focused on the duties of their positions. And this, I believe, is beneficial to the students. After the disruption of learning and other lost opportunities due to the pandemic, I believe our students deserve this. We need, we need to recalibrate after everything has happened as a team and have the deputy superintendent focus on curriculum instruction, the reason we're all here. I believe this is the right decision and to continue moving our students and our programming forward. Students should not lose out due to the events of October and I believe this is the necessary and student-focused decision. So what we're saying then is we've had two positions for a long time now that we didn't need, that the taxpayers are paying for. They had two distinct roles, two distinct responsibilities. One, the most important one, is the one held by the deputy superintendent right now, which is curriculum instruction, assessment, professional development for our teachers. And then the other one that deals with outreach, working with boards, governance, all that.
transparency. Don't be silly.
That's where I stand, speaking to my Board colleagues right now. I hope that my Board colleagues are standing by and going when, going tonight.
I just want to let everybody know that this has been very difficult. These aren't difficult times. I too have read and listened and reread people's comments, people's emails. But I also was listening to, we didn't get here in this place where we are right now in the last year or two years. I look at the big picture. To me, the big picture is always what the kids, excuse me, up on top, excuse me, is why we're here. There's something, there's something, there are things that are discussed at the Board level concerning employment issues that aren't privy to the public. I hope that people can respect and understand the way that we do vote, to know that it is not, it is in the best interest of the students. So therefore, I, I too, I'd be voting to approve Dr. Davis.
We are open. Enlighten us to what?
Your reasoning is.
Your reasoning. You haven't told us anything.
Transparency and a flip service.
We've, we've told you over and over again about transparency, and the way we find things out are from the news media. I go to Syracuse dot com, I see Ballensville has hired or has potentially hired another superintendent. It didn't come from you guys, it came from the media. Why can't you send emails? Why can't you send, you know, district-wide communications on this? And that's part of the problem. There is no two-way conversation. When people here watch you speak, we have rules that say you only get three minutes, and then you don't respond back. We just want the ability to be heard, and have you guys respond back.
So to ask my Board colleagues if I can respond, because we typically don't, but obviously, we were trying to do the right thing in regards to communications. In two thousand twenty-one, we put out a employment satisfaction survey, and one of the major things that came back was this teaching staff was not happy about getting communications from the families. The families were finding out before the teachers. So we, as any other business would do, if there was going to be a leadership change, they shared that with their employees first. That was leaked out by an employee, that we knew that that could possibly happen, but there's nothing that we could do about it. It's not good practice to make a public statement like that before action's actually taken. And that's why that was. It wasn't to disrespect any community members or a lack of transparency. These are conversations under, under open meetings laws that we can't have in, in public. But we have the discussions that we are now, our reasonings are going around the table. But the communications was as such, because that's how it's typically done, and that's what the staff asked of us in two thousand twenty-one. And that is one of the things that we ensured happened when we did have our former leadership, that you guys got this notice as first, if there's any teachers out there. Yes, I wish that we could have done that for the entire community, but we couldn't until tonight. Any of my Board colleagues have any other comments that they'd like to make? We resolved that the Board of Education.
Jen, I'm gonna. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I want to just make sure that I, you know, I listened to a lot of, well, all of the speakers tonight. I've read emails. And I'll be honest, some of those emails and some of the things that were said in those emails within hours of what happened on Friday was a little, that, that took a lot to do, to read through. I will say that we, the notion of transparency, we've, we've made statements as a Board through our Board President, because that's the process that takes place. And that has been happening at our Board meetings. There are certain things that can't be talked about because it's regarding an employee, and so that just falls under the rules of order. In regards to this, I understand, I've listened to different perspectives, and I want to make sure, and I believe, and I, I'll say this about all my Board colleagues, we're all sitting around this table, and we all make decisions based on what's best for students, based on our perspectives. And, and I feel confident to say that about my Board colleagues and myself. So for those of you seeking a reason for my vote tonight, and I put this on the table, if anybody would ever want to reach out to me to have a personal conversation, I would definitely do that. And I have, I have done that over the past couple days. So my decision is based on being in the world of education, that there are two positions right now. And it doesn't, my vote doesn't necessarily have anything to do with who's, someone doing a good job or not doing a good job. I think our leaders in this district are doing a good job, our staff is doing a good job. Our role is to look at what's best for students and staff, and right now, we have a superintendent position and a deputy, deputy superintendent of schools, two different positions that we pay very nice salaries for. They each have specific, they both have specific roles and duties, and even though... So even though someone's been doing that job, both jobs, in, from what, you know, people are saying, it's very...
Disrupting a district for five months.
Five months is what you're talking about. Five months.
Can you please continue what you're saying, or you can just stop so we can...
That's fine. I can stop.
Move on. Okay. We resolved that the Board of Education approved a resolution to appoint the acting superintendent of schools and approved the employment agreement pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first. Oh, that's right. Thank you. I already did that. Is everyone ready to vote? All in favor?
Roll call.
Opposed?
No.
So the noes will be Sam Shaven and Tony Jomano.
Now, let's hear everybody say the yeses and noes, please. Full roll call, official. You want to do it, let's get it.
It's going to be recorded in the meeting minutes exactly as it was the yeses and noes. You've already gone around the table. The Board of Education has taken steps to ensure the district's administrative team has sufficient support and resources to continue the district's mission by hiring Dr. Kathleen Davis as the acting superintendent effective February first, two thousand twenty-three. The Board sincerely thinks Deputy Superintendent Dr. Joseph DeBarbary for stepping in and acting as acting superintendent through this time. The presence of Dr. Davis as acting superintendent will allow district administrators to focus on the duties associated with their positions and the benefit of our students and staff. Dr. Kathleen Davis has forty-one years of experience in education, serving as a coach, teacher, building administrator, superintendent of schools. She retired in two thousand sixteen after serving as the superintendent of Holland Pettus Schools for fifteen point five years. Dr. Davis has been doing interim work since two thousand seventeen in the following districts: GBS Elementary Interim Principal, Ballensville; Ray Middle School Interim Principal; Oneida City High School Interim Principal, Interim Superintendent; Waterville Central Interim Superintendent, Camstota; New York Mills, Union Free Schools, and Geneva City Schools, all in the same position. Dr. Davis has also taught for University College and their graduate program for education for several years. She has prior experience working in the State Education Department and a school honor review, under registration review team, and has been the Commissioner's Advisory Committee as a superintendent representative. She's been married for thirty-six years, her husband Earl, by Herford WKTV, for thirty-nine years. They both reside in Ballensville. Dr. Davis, however, will reside in Ballensville during her interim work to provide the highest level of support and for the district and our district community. The Board looks forward to working with Dr. Davis along with the administrative team and staff to continue providing the highest quality education opportunities for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Barberry. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Oh, Matt change? I'm sorry. And that, you change him? No, that's not you. No. So six, three. Thank you. Item C, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Ballensville Central School District Annual School Calendar, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Twenty-first. Second, Shelley. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine, zero. Item D, resolved that the Board of Education approved this secret resolution for the Ballensville Public Library pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Shelley first. Julie second. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine, zero. Item E, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Ballensville Central School District Single Audit, Extra Class Audit, Corrective Action for year end of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first. Second, Wayne. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine, zero. Item F is a roll call. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the resolution for the purchase authorization for student transportation vehicles to the Ballensville Central School District pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first. Second, Denise. And Kim will do roll call. Any questions on any of that? Wayne Davidson?
Yes.
Denise Fonsal?
Yes.
Anthony Jomano?
Yes.
Michelle Dekel?
Yes.
Jeff Mariette?
Yes.
Jennifer Petrino?
Yes.
Tony Rosado-Berger?
Yes.
Sherry Shaven?
Yes.
Matt Gager?
Yes.
Next item. Item G, Capitol Project Administration. Resolution resolved that the Board of Education approved the Capitol Project, project position. Resolution pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Shelley first.
Second.
Second, Tanya. This is also a roll call. Does anyone have any questions?
Can I just make a quick statement about this Capitol Project? I know there's a lot of emotion up there right now, but this project is truly for our students, so please support it.
Wayne Davidson?
Yes.
Denise Fonsal?
Yes.
Anthony Jomano?
Yes.
Michelle Dekel?
Yes.
Jeff Mariette?
Yes.
Jennifer Petrino?
Yes.
Tony Rosado-Berger?
Yes.
Sherry Shaven?
Yes.
Matt Gager?
Yes.
Next item. Item H, resolved that the Board of Education approved the service agreement between the Ballensville Central School District and Tyler Technology pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Wayne first. Tony second. Any questions or discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine, zero. Item I, resolved that the Board of Education approved the district safety team for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first.
Second.
Second, Shelley. So we approved this a few meetings ago, as Joe talked about, we now have the parent rep, the committee that aligns with our Board policies. That's why you're seeing this again. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine, zero. Next. Resolve, item J, resolved that the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus equipment, instructional materials pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first.
Second.
Second, Denise. Any questions or discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine, zero. We've now gotten to the Board roundtable portion of the meeting. Does anyone have anything for tonight?
I guess maybe we just like the nine of you, I guess, because my perspective is a little bit different than the rest of yours, is not involved in specific things going on. I started this off, I hope that, I mean, I think we all knew that this was going to be a tension-filled meeting. But I hope that in some regard, here, what I have to say and the perspective that I shared would resonate with all of you, sort of walking away tonight, whether it be a difference in opinion, intention, improve or not, that we're all able to walk away and focus on what I did say, which is just that we're all here as individuals, and politics and school board out of it, which is that, you know, we can have differences in opinions, but that should not stop the love or the compassion we have for one another, as someone who shared that it's been difficult since Friday, and like I said, it has been difficult. But I think we all wish things could have been different, and I just, before we close, I just wanted to say that, you know. I hope that moving forward, we're able to focus on what we have in common, which is just the compassion we should have for one another, and not so much the tension. So that's it.
As always, as always, as always, thank you. We're all set to move to the next portion. Resolved that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular person or corporation, or the medical, financial, or credit history of particular person or corporation, or matters leading to appointment, employment promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, removal of particular person or corporation, and also the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property or securities, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value thereof. Can I have a motion, please? Who had first? Tony, Tony had first. Wayne has second. All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine, zero. You guys can take five minutes. You can move over to the other room.